I don't even have to get real close to it. Okay, I'm gonna, Kathy, are you close enough to us now? Can you call roll call?
Okay. Uh, I.
Thanks.
Devin.
Here.
Make.
Here.
Barrington.
Yes.
Lawhead.
Yes.
We have the President of the Forum and you may proceed.
Okay, we'll open the meeting and the open meeting posters are on the table back there and we'll say pledge in the mic over here. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda and before, as we're in the process of doing that, I would like to suggest a move, a changing of the agenda. Later on, we are going to discuss the police officer and go into a closed session. And so, since our two attorneys will be part of that and we want to get them on the road, we're gonna do that earlier in the meeting, okay? We also, Kalina's got a daughter that she says she'll be okay, but she's not there, but she needs to see her get an award, so we're gonna have her do her presentation first, okay? So with that in mind, let's go to, oh, I need a motion for that.
Motion to rearrange.
Yeah.
Our motion to rearrange the agenda.
Reorder, I think.
Reorder.
Yeah.
I'll second.
If I can find a pen. Thank you. Um, Pam and Larry, um, okay, and moved in second, and Larry?
Yes.
Um, Arlene?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
And motions carried. So then, let's very quickly approve, um, move to Kalina at this point and, um, you need your presentation.
Mister?
Do you need it?
Hi, I'm, um, I, everybody hear me okay? I can speak really loud. For those of you who did not attend our last board meeting, I was asked to take a look at our current website and then also look at the new website that we're possibly looking at just to compare the two. Um, so first of all, I will need your participation, so if you just bring your cellphone out, you put it in front of you. Everybody has your cellphone? All right.
Is that the new app type of one?
Yes. I will, I'll tell you.
The text down there, okay?
So basically, I'm gonna show you kind of a glimpse of our website. First of all, what I'll have you do is, um, I will need everyone to go to their search engine on their phones, of course, and then type in in all lowercase. Can you guys see this? And I will, I'll hold up for you guys.
No, I can't.
Yeah, I just noticed that. So it'll be all lowercase, this all has to be spelled correctly. This is, um, a free trial website to the City of Crofton website. Um, this actually is a, is a website. If we do get this website, it will be different than what you are typing in here, but this will give you a little, again, everything has to be spelled correctly in there, all those.
Are they published, did the capitals do?
No capitals, I have capitals there, I'm sorry. Started. Irma, I'm gonna pick on you, are you about done?
No. I'm about to, City of Crofton, I spelled Crofton wrong. Okay. Municipal and Pam altogether, right?
That's right.
Okay. It keeps taking pictures out.
Okay. All right, so next thing is, is I will, um, need you all to scroll down or scroll up to where you see five blue tabs. One should say payment options, a report, a repro, a, um, report a problem, and then like there's another one that will say subscribe. Do you guys see that?
No. Let me, you know, see your website.
And please push on the tab that says subscribe. I'm gonna put this up again, it has to be that.
Okay. I scroll along.
Okay, so, uh, Don, do you, do you have that up?
I do.
Do you have where it says subscribe?
I'm already subscribed.
That's right. Anybody else? I'm gonna have you go.
Is there a space between municipal and?
No. Nothing, no. Let me see your phone, I'll do it, I see pop.
That's smart.
So, uh, go ahead and, uh, once you push subscribe on your phone, scroll back up, they're gonna be asking you your name, put your name in there. This is a free trial thing, um, so go ahead and put your name, your phone number, real quick, everything else that it asks.
Email address.
That's right.
Cellphone.
I subscribed to you earlier, then you have all my information.
Do you have to have your phone number in there for it to let you subscribe?
Yep.
Oops. It doesn't work, come on, everything else, I'll try. What's wrong with it?
Verizon.
It must be.
You should see a site that looks like this, basically.
Might be.
You can see that.
Yeah, all I'm getting is your search.
So, so what, what everybody is looking at is here in your, at this button here, subscribe.
I'll, I'll try, just go ahead.
Does everybody have that subscribe, um, board members?
Yeah, I'm getting there.
I'm coming. Go ahead.
Arlene, you let me know when you're done.
Well, it's not, I'm just trying to get my brothers in for me, uh, da, 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 you know? Right, right, because I'm at the beginning.
Sign says thank you for subscribing.
Yes, you get a blue ribbon.
It tells you it's gonna rain tomorrow.
It's, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna keep going, so you'll now see, um, a screen that, when it's, it'll say like an alert on the top, you need to scroll down and, okay, so basically scroll up to your top screen and on the very top, there should be, um, three bars on the right hand side at the very top. You'll see it, it'll, it's basically a drop down box. Okay, push on that, you will find seven options to choose from, you see where it says home, community, government, residents. Um, now click on the home button. Here you will see a rotating picture screen as you scroll down, um, a nice description of the town of Crofton. Next, let's go and push on the drop down box up on the top corner again, let's push on community. Here you'll have more options you can look at. Go ahead and push on the drop down box, community again, and this time I want you to click on Here you'll see more options, including a page for the city clerk, a page for the mayor, several other options, also a place for agenda, minutes, and then there's many more things you can put on there as well. Let us all click on the tab ordinances. As you see it, it should have a brief, uh, description of ordinances, um, this is something that the town would have to put in there, what ours are. And as you scroll to the bottom, you have options of looking at, you'll have options of looking at the ordinances in the town. Okay, so then I want us all to look at one other thing. So let's all scroll back up to the top and click back on the drop down box on the right hand side up there. Um, you should see a tab that says residence. Once you click that tab, there should be several options under this tab, including building permits, inspections, park and recreation. These are all tabs that we can put our information that the community can go right on our website and print out a building permit and, and such, so it's very self, um, easy to do, they wouldn't have to come here to get a building permit. They also have things on there like the water and sewage, um, any streets and utilities Um, if we can, I'll click on the tab that says alerts on there. You'll, should now see, if you scroll up, a brief description of like an alert system, Now I have just sent you guys all an alert on your phone, you should be getting something coming back to you. Do you have something, Pam?
I do, I do.
Um, so this computer, now that you subscribe to this free website, um, basically, uh, we have where we can sound out alerts to you. So now, if you subscribe, I just sent you an alert about our water, of a water main breaking that you'll have slow water in, uh, first rates or something like that. So that's some things that we can do on our end, uh, on this website for anybody's alert, there could be, uh, we can send out alerts of fire hazards.
So anybody who subscribes, when you go in and type in that alert and you push to send, it goes out to everybody that's.
That's subscribed, yep, yep, yep.
So we'd have to encourage them to do that if they want, if that would come to them then, and then.
Yeah, right.
Troy.
Oh, it actually, it was a text message to their phone because they subscribe, and and their email as well.
What came in phone?
Yep, it should come in phone.
Pretty cool.
Cool.
So, that is the, the newer website presentation and, um, also some things just for this, the city staff as well, there is zero risk, money back guaranteed, it's affordable compared to most websites, um, there's online information, um, and because of this online information that this site provides, there's fewer, fewer phone calls, also, um, reduce printouts because there's printouts for people that want permits and that kind of a thing. There's unlimited support, customized design, so they change their, and, um, and they have a full security system set up to, it's 24/7 access for any, any member here could get on and, and change and manipulate this website.
Is there a limit to how much information we can put on here, because when you start putting ordinances and.
Right.
Uh, planning and zoning, all that on there. I mean, they load that pretty quick.
Right, but this one, it does not have a limit.
Okay.
Is the limit just a certain amount of people that can put it on, is there a control? How many have access to putting information on?
Um, as many as the mayor would want access to.
I mean, do they have, how's that protected? I mean, just so, maybe Joe Blow could put anything on or not?
No, no, there's, it's, it's highly secured, um, through the municipal impact company, they provide all the security for it, but, um, it, going back to like, can, you can put as, it, they said that they, you can put as many pages as needed to expand the city of Crofton.
So we could put, uh, like direct it to other areas, like to the library or to the, right? We could let them have their own pages.
Right.
Senior citizen, library, fire department, any of them.
Right.
So, ag, okay, cool. Urgency management would be a big one, that's what we've been talking about, so they're, we party their alerts.
Right.
And then that would be controlled by the city, right?
Right.
Yeah.
That would be.
We'd hardly put Kalina in charge of it, and she's, right, and then, you know, John's got years and years of experience at the school and he's looked at this, would you like to say anything, Don, unless you've kind of looked at this?
Yeah, he's, Don's actually the one that showed us this website.
It's, uh, it's an easy place to put stuff and it's, uh, it's easy to do and it can be as graphic as you want to, and I like the idea of the alerts, because I don't know how many times I've been asked, how come we don't have any water? Check your website, it'll tell you why you don't have any water.
Well, and the thing that it goes to the text, that text message too, takes care of those old people like me that don't know how to get an email, so they could get that text message, right?
Right, either way.
Right. Katie?
So, a lot of those people that don't do the phone, don't do the texting, where are they gonna get their information, just the same old way?
Right. Yeah. Newspaper.
Newly.
What's around town?
The big thing is, is the more people, I think, that have this, the more neighbors you have that's getting it, the more likely they are to go to the gal next door that they know does not do this or, you know, and, and it's out there, so that they could hang it over the fence, talking on a summer night and, oh, I got this on my phone and we need to watch for this. I'm hoping that, any other comments? Yeah.
I'll buy the shit for weather, it's like cityofcrofton.com.
I think this is just a promotional one.
Yeah, this.
This is a free trial website, so it was a little more difficult for you guys to punch it in, but it'll be different, it'll be much easier to access.
Did we already get a domain? Is that what that is?
No, that's not.
Okay, okay, that's not what we know, okay, I just throw these words out because I don't know what they mean. Okay, so we haven't really decided what that would be, is that right?
I mean, not yet.
Okay, we're doing a trial, then, um, we want it to maybe be unique, so that it's easily recognizable as the city. And I just, I just have to put out there what my belief has been on this, is that if, if we're going to have a website, it should be something that could be perpetual through any administration that comes after this one, that would be owned by the city, run by the city, or run by people who are hired by the city, because the city is elected and therefore that's the people. So, and that, you know, I, I just feel like that we're gonna have a website, that's what should be running. Forty bucks a month, is that about right? It's just a little under forty.
Right.
That's not a bad price. Write it off as office expense, right? Just thinking the paper will say, maybe. Anyway, um, anybody with any more comments? Do we want to vote on this tonight? We want to get it going if we can? Any objections? I'm willing to hear any objections from anywhere. Okay, I would then entertain a motion to approve the new website, um, that would be set up by Kalina and Don and, and be owned by the city and operated by the city. I think there's also, uh, like a, one of those pages is a Facebook page, right, Don? If you can have.
I think that's probably already set up too, and it wouldn't really be contingent on this, uh, I think Kalina set up a, a Facebook page for the city of Crofton.
And we would like to show lots of fun things, you know, like have nice pictures, and one thing I pledge, I will, I can't do it, but I'll hound everybody that can to make sure that we keep it updated, and Don's very in about, about that too, there's not much sense having a website that's five months old when you go in there. So we want to make sure that that's constantly up, okay? Okay, now I'll entertain a motion, anybody?
I'll make the motion to, uh, approve this, uh, website for the city of Crofton.
Second. Okay, moved in second, and then, uh, Arlene?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
So passed. Okay, now we're gonna move to, um, and both bear with us, um, the very last thing on the agenda is police officer, and we're going, uh, going into closed session, do you have that? Okay. If what state we're supposed to read?
Oh.
Do we have to read that legal term? Kathy, you will cover that?
Which?
Shifted back the motion to go to executive session.
Okay. Yeah. Do we have to do that? Okay, okay, so then we would have, um, I would ask for a motion to enter into executive session to discuss possible litigation matters, okay? So maybe we would make that motion.
And the, and the police officer, or their second?
Both. Litigation matters and contract with.
Possible. Possible litigation matters.
Possible litigation, but contract matters with the new police officer.
Okay, so our motion is going to executive session to go in for possible, um, litigation and for the consideration of new police officer.
Okay.
I'll second.
And Don seconds it, and, um, so then our vote would be Don?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
And Arlene?
Yes.
Pat?
Seven thirty eight.
Seven thirty eight, okay. I would at this time then entertain a motion to continue to retain Coppel Rocky Firm as our legal counsel in matter of the Hendricks contract. Do you make that motion?
I'll make that motion to retain Rockford cell for litigation.
Second.
I'll second.
Arlene, second, okay, um, Pam?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
Then I would also like to have a motion that would approve the contract with, um, police officer Jonathan Hurd.
I'll make that motion to retain Jonathan Hurd as our police officer.
Okay.
I'll second.
And the vote would go with Larry?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
Okay, that. Now we'll go back to our regular, um, agenda. Thank you very much, Kathy.
There's no steps spending your money by listening to you pay bills on the go.
Okay. We might find out how much we've paid you, right? Thank you much, you guys. Safe trip home.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Do we need to have a motion cloud executive session?
Uh, that's a good question. Kathy, do you know the answer to that or even Mr. McNally? We've always been trying to make motions go in and out of executive, but I read that you can just reconvene, we don't have to have the motion come out, do we? No, we just reconvene the meeting? Okay, thank you. Clarify that. Okay, I'm gonna go back to the agenda. Let's take a look at the claims.
Do we want to preview the last one?
Yeah, um, I didn't, they, but.
Yeah, right here.
April sixteenth was the last meeting, and so we have those minutes to approve, um, all had them, so I would entertain a motion to that.
Our motion to accept the minutes from the April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen special evening.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, again, Don?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Arlene?
Yes.
Okay, so then we need to look at the claims, and we have a new format here that has to have done, it gives us who's being paid the amount and what it's for. So, um, for the public's information, we, um, we bought tires, um, for the, for a pickup and had some parts, so, um, that was eight hundred twenty nine eighty. Our garbage, of course, is a monthly thing, forty two hundred, um, auto value, you've got, will have credit. See, what's yours?
This one's yours.
We, we purchased some parts for the slurry truck and we didn't know which cylinders it took, so they sent us eight cylinders and I just recently sent four back.
Okay, so, so that's four hundred dollars from some of them.
But there'll, will be some credit.
And I, just for quick information, we talked about this, the claims about what all we wanted to do with that truck, but we've gotta keep it running, it's an old truck, and if we, uh, there is a new truck figured into the cost of the sewer rehab, but we've gotta keep that truck running in the meantime, so is that about wrapping up, Larry? Yeah. So, um, Black Hills Energy, of course, is a thousand dollars. So Black Hills Energy, of course, is a thousand dollars. Did you find out anything about that?
I am, yes, I am recording, yeah.
And I've got to put a call in. We find out we're reading two meters, and we don't know what the deal is here. Blue Cross, of course, we pay, health insurance, twenty-five hundred. The bond payment is due June fifteenth, and that is an interest payment on the Sharon Street. That's sixteen thousand four hundred eighty-six twenty-five. Public Power with Cedar Knox, three thousand, Rural Water, nine thousand. Clerk Books is fourteen hundred. Program support, did we get a contract for so many hours?
Nope, that's optional. That's later down the agenda.
Is this just what we've done now?
That's what we did in the past. You have options with how many hours you want. You went back.
Okay. So this is an estimate, right? And we're looking at, she's got a call in to find out what we can, how many hours we can get the book contract, right?
It's later on down the agenda.
Okay.
Your options.
Okay. All right. C Mark is fuel for the police car, a hundred bucks. C N H productivity, Caton, Caton's mower parts, shock absorbers parts and so forth. Colonial Life is the payroll deduction. We don't pay that. That's just, it's paid for the employees, so it's just reversed by them. Crofton Farm Supply, small nine thirty, nine dollars and third cents for all. The Journal Publications and Envelopes, eleven hundred ninety-six thirty. Kalena has mileage of fifty-eight eighty-seven for her economic development travel. EMC Insurance is four thousand dollars. That's our blanket coverage, covers everything, and that's a monthly bill. First bank card is our credit card and charge like the postage and stuff, so we never know exactly what it is, so that's an estimated hundred dollars. Great Plains Communications has the internet, the telephones, the the whole shebang here, three hundred twenty-two sixteen. Gressenberg Implement, parts. Nine hundred.
The zero turn mower.
The zero turn mower for nine hundred thirty-six sixty-eight. Leaf is the copier lease of sixty-three dollars. Lukens is welding, oh no, you just bought the iron, twenty-nine eighty. McNally, he got away too fast, a thousand dollars for attorney fees. Menford Electric, the new breaker out of the softball, same as six hundred forty-five eighty-eight. What?
What that Menford, is that job done?
Yep.
Okay.
Six hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Okay.
That's the new breaker of the softball. Midwest Laboratories, again, is tasked, a hundred and ninety dollars. Is that water test? Okay, water sewer test. Modern Woodman is payroll deductions, again, for insurance that we do not pay for that, no, excuse me. Modern Woodman is the IRA, yeah. That's the three percent of the wage that we pay on our employee. Moody Motors Cable Assembly is fifty-four seventeen. Municipal Supply, seventeen oh nine.
Where's that from?
That's like parts, parts for the water.
That's for the water stuff, yeah, okay. Department of Revenue, sales tax, sixteen ninety-one. That's a payment of, you know, our, the sales tax we collect from the water bills. Public Health Environment, fifteen bucks per test. Norfolk Daily News, we did an advertisement there for our police officer, ninety-eight forty-four. Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District was that fiscal year membership, nine twenty-nine twenty-eight. One Call Concepts is the Digger Hotline, thirty-four twelve. One Office Solution, our office supplies, thirty-eight twenty-four. We have net payroll estimates of payroll for one month, ten thousand, ten thousand, and then the taxes and so forth, it's a five thousand. Those are estimates as we come up with the middle of the paper. People's Grocery for Cleaner, nine forty-three. Plumbing and Electric for Coupling, seven ninety-seven sixty. Quell Corporation is copy paid for, a hundred and eighty-five ninety-seven. Shoemaker, to bore in a water line, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Share Corporation, three thirty-one twenty-five, parts for, what's that, parts for? Share Corporation.
Sure, that's cleaning supplies.
Cleaning supplies, thank you.
Who'll eventually remember these things?
Brian Staubbaum, Scrap Metal, right?
Yeah.
Service Steppen, Steppen Service. Reading backwards, I got this one. Fuel and nine hundred seventy-five thirty-nine. Randy Steppen, compressor, Jaghammer Rent, two hundred thirty-five fifty. And we got a mower deck that will fit our tractor, that is still in good shape, that we were looking at and doing all the comparison, thanks to Mr. Jerry Stepman, founder. Thank you much.
Is it on here?
This is more than you told me, though.
Is it here? Over a week.
Jerry, this is more than you told me it was.
No, it is.
Five dollars more.
Thirty-two hundred.
Twenty-nine fifty-five. Geez. B Plus Wireless is twenty-two eighty-nine, that's two pages. Tim Arts Construction did some repair for us on water lines like he always does, seventeen fifty-five. Verizon, our cell phones, two seventy-seven. There was a credit on, a hundred ninety. It will be credited, a hundred ninety, because they did some calling on some mix-ups. West Hudson Lumber is a hundred and three forty-five, and Yankton Janitorial Supply, four one twenty-four. Okay? Pretty reasonable as I go through, I mean, all those sound big, but we're around a big city. Any questions or any comments, anybody?
That one from Plumbing Electric, Larry, is that for parts that Tim had to get to fix that water line?
No, it's different, different times. It's more on him, but I don't have on hand, you can't get them.
So you get them from P and E? You get them from P and E and then we keep them when we need them?
What's that?
I said you got them from P and E, they keep the parts that we need.
Yeah, they've got a lot of parts there. I buy them there when I have to.
All right.
Otherwise I send them.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Our motion that we approve the claims that were, need to be paid for May sixth meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, Pam?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
So we have before us financials for March. For those of you who get on the internet and so forth, if, since we've approved the new website now, we'll get that information out, and these should be easily accessible. I was reading in the, Kathy and I sat down one day and talked about this whole thing about getting the financials out, and if you remember right, Charlie, when she commented about getting that meeting second Wednesday of the month? It was about we can't finish things up when we have it too early in the month. Well, I was, you know, my thinking is, well, it's in the computer, push the button, but it's not that simple, I understand that. So I was reading in one of the state statutes, things, and there was something about you have twenty days from the end of the month to get the financials done. So we would never have the meeting except for the end of the month if we were going to do that. So when we started talking about what's a good Monday to have a meeting because of other things like school board and so forth, and first Monday is good, Kathy and I sat in there, and I said, let's do the month clearable. And that gives a whole month to get these financials out, straightened out, we can talk about it. So the financials that just came out, and Kathy's doing a great job of figuring out what's going on, and they're still working on stuff, making adjustments. Remember, there's some things there that don't apply anymore, you know? So we're going, you'll see this get better and better, I think, as we go along, and clarifications, and maybe change some names where, you know, an account or a fund. Remember that a fund has to be kept separate from everything else. Most of us that have bookkeeping experience and or education still waver a lot with fund accounting, because it's different than straight old other kinds of accounting. Funds are, and when you begin to use municipal funds or schools or any other rest of it, you're governed by law and law. So you can't take out of this fund and put it in another fund. You can't borrow, you can't, you know. So you're going to see a lot of different funds. The money's all upon pot, so to speak. Okay? But the funds are different, and we have to keep them that way. So I don't know that I want to say a whole lot about this, except this is for March. When we went through, when I went through the balance sheet, and I think you guys went through it too, that kind of got the budget in that gives you a comparison. So if we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for streets, how much have we spent? And remember that we're halfway through our fiscal year, so that's six months. And a lot of these funds were right there, we're right about halfway. So that's encouraging. So I don't know. Pam, did you want to say anything about any of that, or?
Well, the one fund that I see where we're still having problems with trying to get our expenses to equal our incomes, the water fund. And that's been an ongoing problem for years, is because we're, we have water going somewhere, and we found a few leaks. How many of them this winter were contributing to that? We don't know. That's the one thing I can see where we were paying out more than what we had collected. It looks like we are, our income was just a little bit higher this year at this point than it was last year for the city motor vehicle sales tax. And sales tax we were down, city sales tax we were down slightly, but not bad. And the highway allocations, motor vehicle fee, municipal equalization, they're all ahead of what we were at six months last year. So when I'm saying ahead, I'm not talking an exorbitant amount, but it's still collecting a little more, three thousand dollars, maybe a couple hundred. It varying which fund it's coming from. There are some things where I'm trying to figure out why when we have our street debt, when they talk about it, it says debt principal zero under our public works, which is streets and bridges and sidewalks. But I know we paid some payments on our debt, and so then that comes up later in, so when you, if you guys get these, they're really complicated to follow. So our street debt is over on another page, even though underneath the streets it says we paid zero. In actuality, we paid eighty-five thousand. So talking with Kathy, we got to figure out how we can get these to read easier, so we're not thinking that we haven't paid anything when we have, so you got to keep digging, so. It's just some, I think some, oh, what do you call it? Some things that make it quicker to locate and maybe clean a few things up. There is one account that I believe, Ed, correct me if I'm wrong on this, it's underneath the economic development. It's called a new business scholarship, I believe it's two hundred fifty dollars. I believe that the business that that was supposed to go to did not want it, so I believe we need to give that back to the Well, it came out, it came out in the meeting and how it was supposed to work.
Okay, that, the new business scholarship was given by the thrift shop. But for some, but they channeled it through the setting to get to a better. And the business didn't want it, so it's in our account, we need to give it back to them. And then I don't know what the implications are, I don't know why they can't give that money direct. I don't know why we're even involved in it. So we're doing that, we just need to hear that. It's one of those things that we need to go through our books as near as I can see, but we'll investigate and find out.
But, you know, so if anybody, when you look at this, go back down and ask Kathy how, what's what, so I've been marking up my paper a while, but she answers all my questions really well, so.
And I'd like to add, like she said, the water fund, for one thing, if we look at the water revenue, we've got seventeen three ninety-six in the, and the expense is twenty thousand, so it looks like we're like three thousand and a hole or whatever. But the fact of the matter is, is that the wages are all broken up into different funds. So depending on what you paid out of that fund for wage, if that's a set percentage, and you have a high thing of repair that month, you can throw that into the hole in a hurry. So if you look at just the revenue in from the water, seventeen thousand, I think, five twenty-nine, and the actual cost of goods that was paying the water bill to Cedar, whatever they call them.
Cedar, not Cedar.
Rural, was ten thousand, so we made seven thousand, man. So the other thing is the sewer, we've been taking, is it fifty percent? Fifty percent of the city workers' wage on the sewer. So the sewer makes nothing, but in fact, it's got no expenses and shouldn't show a big dollar. That's why we raised it, was to create a fund there for the repair, or to do the sewer thing. So we're going through all this, and Eddie was in here a full day, and we complained about some of this stuff, and now, you know, as Kathy likes to say, it's getting, learning all of this too, and we're all deciding as we go along where we want some of this to show, because we need to see what we're actually doing, not something that is colored by where we expense things. I am trying to get a hold of one of the auditors who will tell me if we can just pay all of the wages out of the general funds, and then, you know, expense some part of it out of those proprietary funds if we want to, if we need to. But that gives us a true picture of what our actual income and cost of goods is, rather than clouding it with all the, besides that, and cut down the number of entries, because you have to make so many entries on the wages. And that saves us money on just time putting things in the book. So that pretty well covers it, okay? Nothing to decide there. We have some liquor licenses, so these are all from the agents.
Yes.
And they are for, I think we can okay those en masse. They are for weddings, we have a lot of people getting married. June eighth, Jenna Gunther. June fifteenth, Marla Wortman, Maria Wortman, excuse me. Marla's already married, yeah. And June twenty-second is Jason.
Wobber.
Wobber, there we go. And then, let's see, I got a niece, and I got a granddaughter, and I got, we got a lot of weddings this year. So those are liquor licenses that we will want to approve, and you can go in one fell swoop if someone wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve of all the liquor licenses for the upcoming weddings, the three of June eighth, fifteenth, and twenty-second.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved in second, and so Larry?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes, I got one question.
Yes, cool.
Well, my liquor license say six eight, six fifteen, and six fifteen, did I just get a double one and one that's?
I have no idea.
Okay.
It says on here, twenty-second.
Okay, sorry.
But if there's a claim.
Well, I just want to make sure the original isn't dated wrong.
We checked that.
I will.
I got two fifty, it's true.
Kathy will take that. She's a good checker. Okay, building permit for Mike Harold is, Mike is, Mike Chase is in here.
Where's, where's that?
Mike Harold, it is on the stamp, he wants to expand his deck.
Okay.
And it's signed off, like everybody except you.
Okay, so we can approve the contract. Okay. So if we.
Eight street, is that? You have those five or six houses out there.
Yeah. He's got that deck with ramp, that's up for the wheelchair. He's got that ramp.
So is it on the front side of his house or the back side?
Back.
It's on the back.
Okay.
He's not, he doesn't own it.
Yeah, it's all been approved, except us.
Except us, then, okay.
I'll motion to accept the building permit from Mike Harold.
I'll second.
Okay, motion, um, by Pam, second, by Dawn, uh, Arlene?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yep.
Uh, so I guess, you know, we've got the, the deal, the mower decks on the veil, but we need to approve buying it. So, uh, if I could have a motion to approve buying that, that mower deck. We talked about this, we talked about this one other meeting, but now we're not gonna approve it, I guess, you know. You know, I told you, I told you if it didn't fit, you were gonna have a heck of a time selling it, but you know...
It's got a motion, right?
It fits. It fits, okay. It's even in our custody, isn't it? I saw it the other day, I went out and looked at it, thank you, Jerry.
Brandon?
Yep, still in the box.
I'll make a motion, we pay for this on mower deck.
Okay.
Actually, it's a whole, it's a whole mower.
It's the whole mower, yeah.
The old deck.
With, with all of the hookups and everything, brand new. Got, got lost in the back of a warehouse, it's uh, older, so it fits our older tractor, but they just didn't get it moved, and it's a steal. Does those run seventy-five?
I think they, they told me that when they got it in two oh nine, that the net on was around forty-eight hundred, five thousand dollars.
Okay, five thousand.
If you look from then till now, that's, that'd be quite a price.
Yeah, and, and so, so Jerry put the word out, and somebody found it for us, and we're tickled to death, because we didn't know what we were gonna do there. Because the mower, the tractor's still good, but the mower was giving us a lot of trouble. It's already been worked on twice, so, good deal. Okay, I had a motion, did I not?
I'll second it.
Okay, um, then I will call Dawn?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
And Arlene?
Yes.
Okay, um, Alan has, um, would like to address the, the council about the sewer cemetery.
Yeah, the assisted living, we're gonna have a tour of cemeteries. We need to borrow your cemetery for a evening.
Okay.
If we're gonna have a new twenty-eights, if that's a Friday, Friday evening, we're gonna start out here, it's a holding room. They have the people registered, they're out there. The city cemetery, I think we're gonna have five locations, and same old industry at this present time. What we're gonna do is have actors stand by the graveside over that person, that, they'll portray that person as if they were alive, and what they do in the community and so forth.
So it's kind of like a history type thing?
A little history thing about that person that is very dear.
It's kind of an honoring of the people, it's an honoring of the people.
It is.
It's, it's not meant to be more of a joke, it's, it's basically an honor.
People that are, you can do that kind of stuff, you know, a lot of people are buried out here, either who is that guy, you know? Or, so we're trying to bring them back to life, to say...
Is this sponsored by the assisted living? And so then is it gonna be a...
It'll be, it'll be advertised.
Is it, there's gonna be a charge?
Yeah, there'll be a charge, we're not sure what's gonna be here.
Is this like an acting troupe that comes in and does it then?
No, it'll be local people.
Local people, okay.
Did we say anything, Rose?
I think you're pretty well right. We don't occur a bidding time, because maybe then we'll...
Yeah, we'll break it, we'll have a cemetery, we'll have it, you're there, you're going to see.
Okay.
It will be going...
Kind of a way to celebrate the history and the people of the town.
Well, with certain people, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
Yeah, yeah. So again, I'm asking for permission to use the cemetery today evening.
Objections from anybody? Have you had any objections?
Okay, thank you.
So do we need to um, to run that through and, and approve it?
I'll make a motion for the uh, city cemetery to be used for the newer cemetery by the economic, you know, no?
Assisted.
Assisted living, assisted living.
I'll second it.
Okay, um, Arlene?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
Okay, um, the additional hours for clerk books, we talked about that a little bit, there's um, kind of gas estimation of the cost.
That's the cost, that's the hours, the, the package they have picked the last, so that's the one I just...
Okay, so are we, we have other options?
But you, you, yeah, you, no, any of these, it's when, it's very last year.
We have, we have, um, what happens with the um, with the hour purchased ahead, it gives us a discount. Because that way, he knows he's gonna make some money, and we know that we can use it up. We just call him, and they don't have to bill us, and, and we use them. So, we bought twenty-six hundred last time, is that what you had in there?
No, she couldn't.
Fourteen.
She put fourteen hundred, twenty hours.
Fourteen, which is twenty hours. I don't know when we did that, was that like a year ago, maybe? Because it was, but the day that I called him...
Probably in October of last.
Okay, so, um, when I called him and asked him to stop here and do a kind of a training with us that day, he had nine or ten hours left on that. We pretty well used it up all that day. And then, but he didn't charge us for all of it, because, must not, because then you talk to his girl again following. So, he's pretty good about, you know, being pretty lenient about it. I recommend buying it ahead, because we just take money, and we're gonna use it. So, I guess, I, any suggestions? We've got five, ten, twenty, and forty hours. I think we figured twenty hours, and, and we, like I said, we had some left not long before that contract, so it's fair enough. It was a total contract, but there are time, there's no time, it's not...
Not for the more...
I didn't think so when we thought of it.
So there's no timeframe?
I don't think, no, it's just like when we're getting close to running out, why, he'll notify us, and we can...
And then you upgrade again?
Yeah.
Those hours just start when he's here working on it.
Right, or no, when, if they, if they use him on the phone, or, because they can get right into our computer and help us change things.
Oh, so everything is on you?
Everything is timed, yep.
And I had, I just assumed more, you become comfortable with it, and Kalina becomes comfortable with it, the amount of time we spend on the phone with him will, and maybe should be go along? Or unless they make changes to it, you know? Because it, wasn't that, isn't this program something that kind of involves as it goes along?
Yeah, I know.
Well, and Eddie is now working on another whole new section, because, right? Did I get that right? It's because...
He's more into development right now.
That's what I mean, he, they, he's found some things, the program wants to make better, so he's developing another section. So the people that work for him are doing more of his support than he's... So I'm gonna guess when he gets that done, if it's something we want, then there's gonna be some more training involved. So we're gonna have to have more on. Unless it's something they don't want and don't like, and it's like, sometimes. So, any motions with any particular hours?
Well, we're already approved, or the, enough for twenty hours.
That was an estimate.
Yeah.
That was an estimate. That was approving the estimate, we have to approve buying it, yeah. Which would change the estimate. Yeah, we can change the estimate if we need to.
Yeah, we can go up to fourteen hundred, okay.
I don't know what that works out to, and how are you doing?
I'm, I'm um, fourteen, right?
Seventeen, right, seventy dollars.
Seventy bucks an hour.
Seventeen?
Seventy.
Seventy dollars an hour on that, fourteen hundred.
Goes eighty, seventy-five, seventy, sixty. The more you buy, the less it costs.
Right, okay. Well, is that right, if we can't go over the fourteen, because that's all we approved?
No, that was an estimate.
Yeah, that's an estimate, so we can go, we can go with any one of these. Just see, well, I don't know. On the other hand, if, if something new does come out, and we take a lot of hours, we might as well get it as cheap as we can too, because he'll go up with the hour, right? The minute he comes out with a new deal.
Well, don't you think you like to purchase the program, though?
Yeah, yeah.
No.
And that, and that's gonna be our option, but, yeah. That's what, that's what I'm saying, and he may not make it apply anyway, so, he might say it has to be all the hours, so... I guess I'd make towards twenty at this time, just to renew the twenty that we had, if that lasted possibly a year.
Well, we did have, wait, crash force, at one point.
Right, right, we used a lot of it at the end.
We used it at eight hour increases.
But that would also take care of something, if something new did come out quite fast, and we had to...
So Kathy, how long, how, uh, how long does it take to use twenty hours up? Is it three months, five months?
Well, we had it for a year, sorry, that, I think. I think we bought that, no, I'm sorry, you said, yeah, no.
About six months, yeah.
About six months.
Six months will take care of about twenty hours, then, roughly?
It did the last time.
And we took ten hours in one day, so it had worked, you know, or not even...
And we're not looking at using that many, like, that at one time.
Right, so, so if we had ten of them left at six months, we, this should last for six years, is what I'm saying.
What, the, the forty hours or the twenty hours?
The twenty.
Well, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the twenty hours for fourteen hundred dollars for this clerk books program.
I'll second it.
Okay, um, uh, Dawn?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Arlene?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm in the pool, um, we have, uh, we, I think we, we approved Nikki already. Um, I think I had a list of people at that point of, um, and, but we just kind of had said they were gonna hire anybody that applied, basically.
As long as they pass through.
As long as they can qualify, yeah. Because the more people we have, the better chance we have. Um, Bucks Open Girl, can't remember her first name, which one? Came in and applied?
Yeah.
For part-time, which one was it?
Dale, Dale Fox, open this car.
Yeah, no, but I can't remember, Kenzie.
But Kenzie, I believe it was, yeah. So we can add her to that, okay?
How many lifeguards are there, do you know?
I don't, not right off the top of my head, um, we have... We need to think about opening date.
Well, if it stays this cool, there won't be a...
Very, when are we gonna have that water bottle?
We know they use it start up Saturday before Memorial Day.
So how much, how much repairs do we need to do that, you know, I walked through it with Jerry and you, or Luke one time. Uh, are you repairing anything that drastically, that's gonna have to be changed?
Well, I imagine, I, I've gotta work on the boiler, that's gotta get taken care of.
Does all the doors open and lock, the ones that are gonna be, you know, that they don't want no, no pedestrians in there?
Yeah.
They all work without trying to crank the keys off?
No, that's, they're all working, it's all new locks, uh, two, three years ago, we put all new, new knobs on, so... And all works pretty good.
And it's been drained, it's been cleaned, and it's filling. So if the sun will come out, it'll warm. If not, I guess we'll use a lot of heater. Um, in the meantime, and I didn't get a chance to call today, and Larry worked faster, and I thought he was going to, so... Uh, but I have a call in too, um, I can't think of his name, but he's the, he's the pool man that works for J D O. And he wants to come out, or I want him to come out, he agreed to, to just come out and take a look at it while it's filling, while it's pretty well empty, where he can just answer questions about its viability, recommendations, how long they'll last, or where to build, or, yeah, anything to do with the pool. Um, we'll put that out, so the public knows when that is. He said I needed to give him a couple days or three days notice, so I'm gonna guess Wednesday or Thursday, we should plan on it. And um, then he'll be down there, people wanna talk to him, or whatever. I wanted to talk to him to find out what his recommendations are for that area. You know, I, if, if, if any of you have talked to me, you know that I don't wanna be able to pull back in that water hole. But I don't know what, you know, from there, I don't know, but I don't wanna be able to pull, pull back in that water hole, so... But I, if I can, I'm not gonna pay him off, but if he tells me that that's right, we shouldn't be, I say, see? Anyway, um, we'll plan on doing that. And like I said, anybody that wants to, I will make sure that that information gets out. Maybe I can, if I can get it to the paper or not, but I can't get a hold of him probably tonight. I might, they have called me that time, so I might be able to do that. So that's what we have on that, the opening date coming again, what, Saturday after?
Be Saturday before Memorial Day.
Anybody know what that is?
Oh.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
That's usually what they do, I don't know.
We need lots of sun.
There may be nobody there if it's cold, but we'll see what happens, right? And, and, so, and that, and that's um...
Do you know where we stand on everybody having passed the, the lifeguard applicants?
The, um, well, there's two or three of them getting approved for the, uh, what is, what does Nikki call it? Um, pool manager, not manager, um, whatever it is where they can actually administer the, the chemicals and all that. Operator, thank you. Um, the, um, you're blond-headed, Anna, Anna Steppens is gonna be one of the managers, along with Nikki. And, oh, and one of the changes on that list, you asked about the list, the two Ostermires, Raya and Mason. Uh, Lacy Sprockles getting qualified, Hannah Van Hees, Katie Smith, Katie Smith called me and said that she took on another job at Yankton, so she can't do it. Um, Jackson Weevilhouse, Anna Steppens, and Nikki Sprockles, and then the Bucks Open Girl.
How many is that?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
And how many do they have to work out on, on the ship?
They have to have, they have, you have to have an operator on, on the grounds, right? You have to have one in the office and two at the pool, so you have to have four on duty. Um, Kathy tells me that people are calling the office now, asking about lessons. Started to get a hold of Nikki, and then she had that lesson, so I, I've gone forward a lot. So I'm sure she's aware of it. I'd asked her once before, and she said they were talking about the lessons, and that those will be offered in the morning. And then she's got it covered from like one to whatever. We need to talk about, I, the cost, I think, um...
So do we do, of course you get your year, your year pass.
Family passes, um...
An individual ice ball? You only have one, one kid, or?
Day passes, I had that list with me, do you have that with you?
I.
Um, I don't think there was any need to change anything, was there? The only one we questioned was, um, you had an example from Bloomfield. And I think they had talked about the, or from somewhere, they talked about any adult that was in the kiddie school needed to pay. I think we've not done that in the past.
That was, that was done for daycare, my wife does daycare, took them down there. And what was happening is that nobody was watching them in the kiddie pool, some of the daycare. Other places, they gotta be in a kiddie pool with the children that are in there that they're watching. That's where that cost came involved.
Well, how many of those kids, um, that go down there are from families that have already paid for their, their family passes? So there are quite a few?
Well, it's hard to say, because a lot of the parents that my wife watches, they, they don't go to the pool, they just, you know, she does it on her daycare.
So they may or may not have family passes?
Yeah, correct, correct.
But typically, we have not charged for kids in the kiddie pool, right?
Well, there was a, there was, there was an incident.
No, not the kiddie pool, but I know they did try charging, like say you as a grandparent or a parent, if you wanted to go to a school set inside the pool and watch your kid, whether in the kiddie pool or the adult pool, here a year or two ago, they tried charging you. And I think that's, you know, wrong, I mean, you can sit on the outside and watch it, but, I mean, as a city, as a liability wise, and that, you could almost want a grandparent down there or a parent that's keeping a close eye on their kid, you know?
Yeah, you don't wanna, you don't wanna unattended in there, that's what was happening.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, so if people wanna go sit and watch their grandkid or kid swim, I think, you know, they're not, they're not swimming. It's almost a benefit to have them sitting there watching.
Anybody that gets in that pool should pay, does everybody agree with that? In the pool.
In the pool.
In the pool should pay, right?
If they're sitting on the side.
But if they're sitting on a bench, just watching their grandkid, no.
Okay, does everybody agree with that?
Yeah. But there is also incidents that happened a number of years back, and I think a lot of people out there probably remember this. Some parents were paying their kids to go, and they both went on jobs and the kid was unattended, a younger kid, and that happened. That happened in drought.
Right.
So.
Well, the kiddie pool, they almost have to have an adult in.
If they're in the kiddie pool, they have to have an adult with them.
They just shouldn't be allowed in.
If they're old enough to get in the big pool, they do not have to have an adult with them, is that true?
No, they don't, 'cause I know last year, they made them do, they had to do a test to be able to come to the pool by themselves.
Right.
They had to be able to swim across and back, or something like that, to be able to come to the pool without a parent.
Well, now, how in the heck you ever gonna learn how to swim if you adult, if you have to already swim before you get there?
Well, but I, you know, they, they've come to the pool with the parent, but instead the parent could say, okay, you can start going to the pool by yourself this year. The lifeguards wouldn't let them come there unless they could swim in a certain depth of the water by themselves.
Some of those kids are just limited to go to three to four foot, and that's it.
Yes.
Well, and if they, and if they stay in, if they stay in the depth that they are capable of, that's okay, isn't it?
Well, that's okay, if you got a parent or somebody said, saying, okay, that's far enough, don't go any further.
So that should not be the lifeguards?
Well, how, how?
I'm just asking the question.
Well, yes, it, it should be, but on the other hand, the lifeguard has how many children that she's saying, okay, you're in three foot, you can't go past one foot. She, she might do that.
Well, and she's superwoman, or she would be, right?
Right, right.
So, yeah.
Well, so that's why they made them start doing that test, that they have to be able to swim, I think it's like in the five or six foot, back and forth by themselves, without anybody's help, before they could go to the pool by themselves.
Should we just leave this up to our managers unless there's a problem, and then we step back?
But they didn't have a certain age, did they, two?
I thi- I think there might have been an age gap.
I think there's an age limit on.
They tried putting an age on it, maybe, but it didn't work.
Right.
Because really, a five-year-old shouldn't be undetected by a, a parent or a daycare.
Right.
But they had a kid that.
If they can swim that well at five years old, then they, you know, they're ten, oh, and first of all.
But they had a kid that was pretty old, and we all know who it was, jumped off the big diving board, went down and never came up. And they had to get him, and then the younger brother, while they're rescuing that guy, the younger one that was that tall, gets up on the high board and they had to talk him off.
Oh, geez.
So it's, it's a, not a babysitting program, it's not.
No, right.
No, and that, that's why I'm saying.
And that's why they need, that's why they have four lifeguards, that's.
Yeah, and that's why, if you've got a grandparent that says, hey, I'm here with my kid, or a parent, I'm not gonna swim, but I just am gonna sit here and watch them. I don't think you should be charging them, that's a benefit to them.
Well, and I think that if you've got, if you've got issues with behavior, you should welcome probably the adult supervision. Then, then it's a, you know, then they, then you can say, take your child and go home, like, if they're not gonna listen to anybody, you know? I'm kind of in favor of letting the management kind of decide where we are on that, and if we have an issue, then make them some rules, like.
On, on what?
On, on, on age or, or, you know, like, um, safety, like, if that kid's there and they couldn't, and they shouldn't be there, then send them home.
Okay, but how about on, on letting the parent or the grandparent who's not swimming go sit inside the.
I don't have an issue with that, anybody have an issue with that?
No. Maybe when they sign it for like a family membership or something like that, the manager could hand them a set of rules?
Yeah.
Uh, stipulations, the regulations that they need to be aware of.
Let's, let's get Nikki to kind of put something together, and maybe we can all take a look at that, and after all, and we'll be into the next meeting here if we need to make some adjustments of where we are. Does that sound good? Okay. Does that sound good to everybody? We're just, we'll, we'll kinda, um, and we'll keep the rates where they were. Okay, then there's nothing to change.
Were they still going to, was the pool closed on Friday nights or Sundays? Are they looking to keep that open every, every day?
She's got a schedule, um, yeah.
Yeah, trying to keep it open.
Yeah.
The rescue squad goes down and does the training too with them.
Say that again, Katie.
The rescue squad goes and does the training with them, and landing, or, you know, this is much more our benefit, it's for theirs too.
Sure.
Um, and so we will probably be doing that the first part of June. Um, the only issue that we've ever really had is, um, trying to get the cot back to the bathrooms. And there is a, the gate that goes from the kiddie pool into the big pool is sometimes locked.
That needs to be unlocked, right?
Um, it's, it's sometimes an issue, but we have been figuring out how to get out of the bathrooms with the cot.
I see no reason why that gate needs to be locked, but you'll be.
Yes.
Probably because you need to have, you need to have the pool open.
Those kids will go in and break, vice versa, that the big kids are going to the little pool, and the little kids don't wake them back, things lock.
Okay.
But I, my feeling on the kiddie pool during the pool break, and this isn't you, but it is a rule, that if those kids are able to be in the big pool by themselves, when break time comes, they have no business being in the kiddie break.
I've gotta say, that's a discipline thing, send them home.
Yeah.
I think that's it. Right?
That's where your, and your lifeguards need to be.
Yeah.
In charge of that, maybe.
Yeah, I, I, you know, if they're not supposed to go back and forth, then you don't let them go back and forth, if they're just not there.
Because break means break.
That's right. And if you're not gonna take your break, go home.
As far as.
Come to my house, mow my lawn.
As far as the issue goes on the locking of the, the, the gate there, is there any way that that can have a quick release lock of some sort? So that if there's an emergency, is there a chance we could have a key? I can't, we're gonna remember what the key is.
Yep. Yep.
Right.
Yep.
And then.
We can do that.
I think that should be a discussion with lifeguard, with the manager.
Yep. Yep. And I kinda think, I, I kinda think that, from what I've talked to some of these gals and the manager and stuff, I think that they're ready to enforce.
Rules.
You know, so, I think we're gonna.
Well, yeah, they'll, they'll know better, because they, I, I've never been into a swimming pool, so I don't know. I mean, my kids, when they were little, but.
Yeah.
As far as managing it or whatever, they, they've done it before, so they know.
They'll know.
One, one thing I heard last year, some people were discussing was, we close the pool every evening from what time? You know what it is?
Uh, I don't know.
Four thirty.
Four thirty then.
And there's, there's some people that gave remarks that the reason they don't come to Crofton is it don't work if they're on jobs and this.
Right. It's gonna be open in the evening this year.
Well, some places don't close, they, they let open, they don't close that hour.
They're open from one to eight.
Yes, and some people thought that would bring more people to Crofton, which I think it would.
We talked about that, so, we're still, I don't know what.
I'm just bringing that up, because I heard, I heard several people talk about that.
Because, and Nikki and I talked about that, that, like, that supper hour, or whatever, that they have, that the kids go home to supper, might be when moms come in and got their, their time to go swim for an hour.
That's very exactly right.
Bring their, bring their little kids in.
Yeah, yeah.
Whether now they're.
We want to make it as accessible and, and safe as possible.
And bring traffic to town.
And bring traffic in, but we know, I, we know by everything that's real, that we're not gonna make money on that pool.
No.
But we, we should have it available, it should be one of the services, uh, and we should, um, you know, try to cover some of the cost, so that we're not in big bad shape. And that's kind of my philosophy, but, but we're gonna make money. But it's something we do for our kids, just like they play baseball, or softball, or whatever, we, we maintain that for their use. And that's what, that's kind of my philosophy here, too, like the Blood and Mobile and the things, and we not charge for the people to come in and exercise here, and those kind of things, this is part of that, that's what the city provides.
And I also think by letting that parent come in the pool and sit there and watch their kids, we'll have a tendency to bring you some people here that are going across the pond.
Well, I think, yeah, and I, I mean, why wouldn't they wanna enjoy that time?
Yes, that's right.
Absolutely, that's family time, that's what we wanna promote. Yeah, I don't have a problem. Okay. We'll go from there, um. We need to wrap this up with Kalina going to a leadership program, economic development funds for cost, Helen, you talked about that?
Yeah, yeah, Knox County has had this program for several ye- couple years now, and it's been very successful.
Yes.
I talked to the board, I have an economic development board, and it was grouped by all members who sent here to ask school of youth, the economic development money, a hundred seventy, a hundred seventy-five dollars worth.
And there's, that money's there.
Yeah, there's, there's, I know, I know their money, they're black, but it, it must be like Friday, Fridays, one, one a month, it's from nine o'clock till two or three, or something like that, or ten, three, or something, but then there are two in June, or I just, it's once a month. And it, it, they have a big banquet at the end of the year, and it's a big thing for the county to do.
Right, and it's, it's not concentrating on economic development, it's concentrating on a leadership scale, which will, they can bring back.
Leadership, which is. That decision.
Community.
Should have a, it's cheap education, really.
Yeah, yeah.
It should be education.
Yeah, I.
Cheryl, I got a couple others that you like.
Okay.
The, uh, also, I'd like to have our board update the cost of economic development plan, right? Well, that plan would develop, it was LV eight forty was originally passed. It had revised since then. And it, it is different, but, for instance, our plan has, you can buy land with some of the money.
Yeah, and that's a longer.
Well, you, you can't do that with the new LV eight forty. And there, there's also a date there, not correct, in that, in that.
In that, in that plan, that's for the local group.
Right, so we have to, I just wanna clean it all up and.
Yep, and, and your committee can do that.
Our committee can do that, and then we'd have to make it to the board for a final approval.
Okay, you wanna do it in pieces, or do you wanna do it all together?
Well, what about, if I have a piece, I'll be able to have to look at all that. But it, 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 I'll get all that stuff to our, our committee, and.
Okay. Okay.
We'll, we'll study that, make sure bring, provide one to you.
Okay.
And I do have a name for the, uh, citizen advisory meeting committee.
Yes, yes, you wanna do that right now? Um, um, we have to approve that, though.
Yes, we have to approve it, you wanna give them here, or should I?
Give, go, go, you got it, yeah, I've got my, go ahead.
Why is it, is the citizen advisory meeting committee, which is a committee that has to oversee the board, that's our chairman of? It's, it's a watchdog committee that makes sure that we're doing everything by the law. And if that's what amounts, and Clean will be on that, she'll, she'll be attending all those meetings. They have to report to the town board, the chairman of that board will have to report to the town board twice a year to make sure that everything that we're doing, and the city is doing, if I have to screw up a hundred seventy-five dollars, to make sure that that falls within the framework of economic development plan. And just, it just checks it down, is what it is. Those people that we, that have to be on that board, there'd be five people. And Roseanne, who'll be here, Roseanne O'Bank, Bob Allen's, John Nap, Donovan Stappan, and Brad Struck. And they all, I, I called them all, and they all, they didn't even accept that position. I just need approval from, we'll probably have a meeting with them, want their approval to set up a organization, or even.
Should have set.
Then, then they're on their own.
Should have a set of three, I kept them in sets.
LV eight forty makes you present.
Hand, hand them down. Sorry, just a second, Alan.
That's why I hadn't, that's why I should have told you, so I got that.
Got it, we got it, sorry, go ahead.
Well, is that, this one, maybe you'll be on that uncopied plan, and then this board can approve with a hundred seventy-five percent.
Yep.
Those three take that.
Got it.
I'll tell you that, back to you.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't, I, I, I have all the people, and they weren't supposed to separate them, but they, I didn't tell them that, so I messed up. So, um, first of all, I need a motion, oh, wait a minute, let's go to, Patrick is going to water operator training course. Can we pass, have a motion placed to approve the money for both Kalina and Pat to get trained? Kalina in the, um, leadership and Patrick in the water, let's get those two.
I'll make a motion to send Kalina for the leadership program and send Pat hookshine for water operating training course.
Okay?
I'll second.
Okay, um, then, Pam?
Yes.
Uh, Larry?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
And Dawn?
Yes.
Now, let's go to the, um, the, we'll put the economic development update, and what's the third party here?
The committee.
The committee, we'll put the committee with the other committee, so the economic update, economic development plan update. And let that committee do that, and then bring it to us, so I need a motion for that. To update the.
I'll motion that Alan Barnes is the economic development chairman, and his committee update the economic development plan, and bring it up to date, and present at a later date to the board for approval.
Good. And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, um, Pam?
Yes.
Uh, let's try to get that backwards, Dawn?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
And then we need, um, I want you to look at the committees that I just gave you, and that one that Alan talked about, the last page.
That's the citizen and Brian Reed review committee, but.
This dictated by the legislative eight forty.
If LV eight forty says you have to do this.
Um, I've heard Irma say this so much, that I call it, that's your, that's our watchdogs.
Yeah, that's what they're, watchdogs.
Yeah, they're the watchdogs.
They, they, they make sure everything goes right, okay? Then look at the.
That the sales taxes.
On the sales tax, say, it is, it is specific to the economic development, I think we talked about this, though, that we would ask them to also review the sales tax that goes to other areas, and they can do that, right?
If they can.
So, and we might, and we might want to add
I.
another committee somewhere, but for right now, I would suggest we let them look at the whole sales tax thing.
I'll probably have a meeting with those people here within the next week.
Okay.
Clean, we have the time to get them all calling, so they, right, Kalina?
So, so that's one committee that we're looking at, and that's your last page there, like you said, Roseanne, Bob, John, Donna, and Brad. Then take a look at the planning and zoning commission, which is your middle page. Administrator is Mike Chase, we've already approved him, he's already working. The commission has been Chad, um, Lonnie, and Randy, and we have added John Zabidel and Roger Sheeper. So they now have a five-person board, and they will, they have a meeting already planned, I think, the thirteenth, and, um, they will, um, elect their, they elect their own chair, okay? That's what the regs say there. Water and sewer advisory committee, uh, Dan Berenson said he would not be chairman, now, here's what happens. Is, if it's not, if it's not ordered that we have that committee, then that's my committee that I want people to get together and work with. And I took the privilege then to name chairman. And I took the privilege then to name chairman because I went out and recruited them to help organize it. If, um, if it's demanded by, by ordinance, then that's like the planning and zoning and the economic development, then they choose their own leadership, okay? Make sense? So this water and sewer advisory committee is not demanded, so, and Dan says he doesn't want to be chairman, Art says he doesn't want to be chairman, so I got, um, and I noticed that I put our two maintenance people on this committee. They're the ones that work with water and sewer, they need to be in there helping, give it information and so forth. So I can ask one of them, or I can ask this, this Johnson, it's the wrong name, what's his name? Looked it up twice today. Steve on the, down there on East Fourth Street. It's a common name, and I thought, well, Johnson's a common name.
Smith?
Yeah, he's Johnson. Anyway, he's the, he's the, he's the second guy from the end down there.
William Dopehouse?
Yeah. Larson?
Nelson.
Nelson, Nelson. He works at, he's been here about a year, they actually, they just got married, or had a reception here. Um, he works for Millers, and he told me that he had worked for the water and sewer department in a city somewhere for several years, so he's got some background, okay? So I said, come on, get on the committee. So we could pick on him, or we could pick on Patrick, or we could pick on Larry, or we can talk about it, but that's, who I'd like you to approve, um, Art's here, and Gail Peterson told me he'd worked wherever I wanted him to, so I put him in there. He's not here to defend himself, so I kind of forgot to tell him he was there.
Okay.
Okay, so then, who else do we have? Let's go to the park board, and I talked Marilyn Nelson into doing this, and, um, this is one of those, it's my little creation because I want everybody working together. So I even put my goal there as to help coordinate, this chairman needs to help coordinate the work enhancement, as well as the plans, short term and long term, for all of our fun things, and our parks, and our beauty of our city. So under that, we have all of the park grounds, the playground equipment, the shelters and restaurants, the swimming pools, softball, football complex, baseball complex, the trees, the shrubs, the flowers, the welcome signs on the edges of town, the cemeteries, okay? This is the beauty of our town, so if we can get that all coordinated. We already have, you already have all kinds of people because the tree, um, board wants to, there are four, five, or six of those, they want to work with people, um, we've got the softball, football people that are working down there with the softball complex, we've got the baseball association, I just want everybody communicating with everybody. And on that committee is Brenda Sage, Elaine Woodman, these, these are people that said, I want to work there, I want to get, I want to get involved. Uh, Wendy Weisler, Art Bartlett, Art's volunteered his time from spray and work. Uh, Jerry tells me he's got all kinds of equipment, and he's gonna come out and help us really do our work, and so, these are, these are the people that will help unify the town. And help keep things, um, up to date and, and, uh, group will work in conjunction with baseball association, volunteer field association, tree board, plans for a unified group that all work together and independently to create the best options available in parks and recreation. That's my goal, folks, though. Um, now I want to go back to the emergency management coordinators, um, that will be our police chief, Jonathan Holt, that we just promoted to hire tonight, and hired by, has graciously, um, came up with all kinds of ideas.
Is it Hunt or Holt?
Holt, H-U-L-T, Holt. Huh?
I think it's a hurt, did they?
Uh, no, it's Holt, it's like the halt, only you take the K and make it a T.
We're, we're calling him the big hurt.
No, he said, he said it's in the back of your throat, ooh, you know, okay. Larry has been involved with, of course, some of this, with the prison management of this, so we thought that would be a good match. I thought it at the last minute, and I can't tell you what the exact name of this is, but it's Health and Safety Board, and that's mandated by ordinance, that's the mayor, the medical person, and the chief of police. And, um, so that's, there's no question about that. Now, the other thing is, folks, that each, there should be a board member on each of these committees. You are not voting, but you can attend when you can and, and have your input. Uh, Pam and I talked about this a little bit today, Don, you've worked with planning and zoning before, you want to continue with that?
Yes, I am contacting Mike Baran.
Okay, we're gonna put Don on that one. The water and sewer, we thought Larry would be a good choice there, Larry, are you up to that?
Yeah.
And, um, what's the other one?
Parks?
Parks would be Pam? Because Arlene, unless Arlene's unhappy, Arlene, you already attended the economic development.
Yeah, I'm with her.
That was good, okay.
Yep.
All right, so there we go, and our economic development's already been, um, nominated and accepted. Any questions, any comments, anybody unhappy or happy?
Have you approved the board here?
We haven't.
We, that's what, I want to do these all together, okay? If this is all okay, that's why I wanted these all, just do one another and get them all. All right? So I would entertain then a motion to approve all of these, um, oh, and by the way, the medical person, I, Jamie was always that, I talked to her earlier, she said she was ready to get, happy to serve, but I understand she's lazy enough. So, um, I talked to Holly a little bit, and I think it'll be, uh, Polly Auger. Okay, is that her last name? Yep.
Who's gonna be?
Any other thing I'm missing on that?
Do you?
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve all these committees and the other committees?
I'll make a motion to approve the following individuals that are on these, uh, four or five boards that we got listed here on these papers.
A second?
I'll second.
And that would leave us to vote, uh, Don?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
And, uh, the next meeting is June third at six thirty, which will be the first Monday, and boy, we're gonna get these early in the months now. Yes?
I want to, on behalf of the rest of the squad, I want to congratulate you guys on, on getting a police officer. Um, we have been making some marvelous checks that are not getting, we've had a little issue with center coming. Um, those are not our positions, we did a truancy call the other day, um, we're not necessarily trained to go in as the first, as, as an officer.
Gotcha.
So, I, am I, to understand, I think it will be our police chief?
Yes.
Okay, and.
Let, you want me to talk about that a little bit, I'd be happy to. He is, he, um, he is a young man out of Minnesota, he is certified at Minnesota, but needs to get his Nebraska certification. We are in the process of putting together a contract, Mr. McCall is working on, and he will work immediately until September. I talked to the academy today, and they said, as long as he's working for us, and if I ask them to get him in, and she said, ask me, and I said, I'm asking, and she's got, um, I think that he'll, you know, that's set. So he will go to Grand Island, nothing we can do about that. Um, he will be gone, and I'll be looking for some help in that meantime, but he's also a great simple on weekends if he can. I've been cautioned not to work him too hard on weekends because they do a lot of spending. It is a long course, it's fifteen weeks, he will start first part of September, he'll finish just before Christmas. They've got four, five, or six holidays in there that he can come in and out for the weekends. Um, he, I have talked with Doc Swift, and Doc is gonna become a landlord again, so he's gonna live in the trailer over there. And he'll be moving in in the next day or two, and I'm so glad you brought that up, Katie, thank you, I'd almost forgotten. Uh, we plan to swear him into service Thursday morning at about ten thirty. I would like everybody to come out and greet him if wants to, his mother would like to see that, and she'll be here for that, and I'd like to have something like coffee and cake or something to meet people.
So will he greet another deputy?
I'm working on it.
And is Pat officially now in the military?
Pat has never been released, I mean, has never been released from medical, so he can't, I mean, there's nothing I can do about it.
What's the new guy's name now, Tony?
Jonathan Holt, H-U-L-T.
H-U-L-T?
He's twenty-five, uh, twenty-six years old, he hails from.
Angleton City?
No, uh, um.
Bollin?
Bollin.
Bollin, thank you, um, he was homeschooled, I can give you his background, uh, he was homeschooled, he went to school for two or three years, and then, I don't, whatever the circumstance, closing a school or something distant, he was homeschooled, finished high school, and, um, his dad was in bad health, and he got a job, um, as a construction worker to help out at home, his dad passed away, he said his mother still needed help, and he stayed to help her, he said he was happy to report, she gets along fine now, and, uh, is happy and settled. And when that all happened, he, I think he worked six years at that. And then he went to Minnesota because he had a brother out there, has a brother out there, and he's very sensible, that's, that was the way he could get, you know, cheaper tuition, boardroom, that's the way I got it anyway. Um, um, got his two-year associate degree, and, uh, came back, he didn't apply at Sioux Falls, um, they were gonna make him work under someone all the time, whatever, and so, we found out that Nebraska's not letting him work, and we've been pursuing this for several weeks.
So has he ever actually been?
Never been on the job, but he did, but in a hundred and eighty days, we could've gotten a reciprocity because he didn't. Because he's new, he's brand new to the game. My, my, I think that, um, I think he has to qualify in firearms somehow, and I, I'm gonna contact the Cedar County Sheriff because that's who the, the academy recommended I get them, get him, if he couldn't qualify. So you kind of know as much as I know at this point. Nice young man, I took him out of Forsykes Inn, got him stuck, and had to call for help to get pulled out, so.
With the fact that Pat has experience, can he do some riding along with him to? I don't know if Pat will, I mean, to, to send a young man out that doesn't have any experience behind him.
I don't know.
Yes, he's got the school.
Yeah, I don't know if we can do that, Katie.
We, we don't send, we don't send fresh EMTs out into the field alone, so is there any way to have someone that has some experience?
I'm trying to get, um, I'm trying to get, what's his name? Mark, Mark Preble to help with some of that. Um, at this point, we cannot ask Pat to do anything for us because of the health commission. We've been, they've made that very clear, that we cannot ask him to work. I.
Or give advice, or can he?
He can't, that would mean he's working.
I mean, I, I hope you, I don't, I don't know whether Pat would do it or not, but I mean, it, it's a little, at least to have some experience. We have mental patients in our community, we have drug abuse, we have alcoholism, and sometimes walking into these homes, we have to have police protection. Um, it's not just stopping trucks from going back to town.
I understand that, and I, I'm assuming, and I, I'll check into this a little more, but if this young man is certified as a police officer, I'm gonna guess there was something more than classroom.
I, I hope so.
Yeah. And that's something we'll find out very quickly. I know he just zipped right through that equipment and said, yep, that's, that, 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 so at least he's seen it. You know? And he said that he, that one of the things that probably, we were chatting, and I said that I had a grandson that all I could ever think of was guns and stuff, you know, I've worked in gun shop and stuff from the time he's out of high school, and talked about being a gunsmith and the whole bit, so he knew all the SWAT people and all the state P's and all this, wound up joining the army, I said, all he wants to do is carry a gun. And he said, um, you know, I did a lot of shooting with my dad, and maybe that was kind of my idea too, you know? So, um, so I know he's handled it done, so.
And the only reason I have to buy rooms up is because, and I, and I, between now and Thursday, and for those times that people will be gone in September, we have to find a way to, um, handle these bill checks and these extra things, um, I don't want to lose these SWAT members over them. And I can't always, we don't have vests, we don't have bulletproof vests.
I understand that.
We can't walk into these homes.
Well, and see, Pat told me in, in January, when he and Ernie quit, that I shouldn't worry about it because all we had to do was call nine-one-one, and the sheriff was supposed to take care of it, and if they couldn't come, the state patrol was.
It doesn't always work that way.
Well, our, our county sheriff has said that they're not gonna do that, so.
Katie, I got a question for you. Let's say we got a, you guys got a call right now to go four miles north of town to a little farm place, and you're just describing, uh, you, you know the area, some people, we cannot send our policeman out of town four miles north because he has no jurisdiction out there whatsoever.
But he can go if you call him, is that correct?
I would think so, if it was something that we would feel uncomfortable with, we would be calling Knox County, and we have a really good response with Cedar County when it's something that we're not sure of. Um, and Knox County would come to, but we've got, we've been having some issues, I'll, I'll be.
Will Knox County come?
They will come, they should.
They won't come into Knox County, right?
They, they are having more issues if it's the call in town, that's what they do.
But they will come into Knox County?
Not Cedar County.
Yeah.
Knox, Knox, yes, Knox County will, if it's out of town, um, if we request, they better, I mean, they better, um.
But they don't want to come into town?
They don't want.
I don't understand that, what did I ever do to that man?
And I've, I've spoken to our county commissioner representative, and I've talked to Don, and yes, I understand for a lot of the hours and crap and all that, and.
Yeah, but that was never an issue before, so, something's, something's going on.
And we were, and I know we were very spoiled when it came to Pat, he did go out of town, and I also would like you guys to, and maybe that, and I know that got him, could get him into trouble. And, um, and I guess I'm not asking for that, but if he felt that there was a need, he would come.
I believe that they can easily go out of town if they are called.
If, if you guys would check your ordinances, I, I would, I would like a clear understanding.
I was just reading the state ones, and that was, if I remember right, but we, if, if it's okay with the state, we can adjust our ordinances to make that work, if that, does that give you any peace?
That gives me a little more peace, yes.
Okay, but I'll, I'll make sure and I'll check with our lawyers. First then.
And then the liability, that covers the insurance, that covers that all, the town, liability insurance?
Yeah.
Does that cover a police officer when he?
Well, that's, that's, if it's legal, it will, that's what we gotta check, yeah.
Okay, and, you know, if I, I want to, if we were hurt, we are separate from the city, we are not.
Absolutely, right, absolutely.
But if we're going to some of these calls, that really a police officer should be going in first, I can't, there are countless calls over the last few years, but if he didn't beat us there, he met us there, and he's there for crowd control, he's there for our safety, he's, and I, and I do understand the lifting, um, he, he's also there to, he, we've had a police, our town cop, that CPR stopped bleeding before we've gotten there, um, so.
Yeah, I think she's, I think she does, and, and you know what, Katie, I hope that, I, I hope the new guy does the same thing, you know?
I have a feeling he will, um, we will find out.
Yeah, he just.
And I just want the board to be aware of some of the things that we ask of him, and, and that we do coordinate with, with, um.
But this might make you feel. But this might make you feel a little better because one of the things he said to me was, would I have an opportunity to maybe work with the young people and do education with drug, and that, that, so I think, you know, and that, so I'm kind of glad to have him on that emergency management kind of thing. And the way we're looking at that, Larry and I have talked with that about, because you guys are responsible for helping me understand that, you know, if, if there's an emergency, you're doing your job, the chief of firearms, chief is doing their job and then Dave even said, and the cops doing his job, he doesn't. So, you know, as Larry and I were kicking it around and we, as we all kicked it around and then I was talking with Larry and he's, well, you know, we used to do this at the prison and we'd do this and, and then you have this command post and I said, you're it.
But the thing is, Katie, I have to be in secrets with a rescue squad and the fireman for one thing. And we do regular scenarios and I understand what we did over there was completely different, but on the same basis. We got adverse weather, it's like we had a tornado run through here. Okay, we had a flooding, we could have a explosion, we could have abduction from daycare, we could have a, a bomb in the schools, we see it on TV every day and these small towns are getting hit. So, we got to be prepared as a town and I got ideas and I'm going to go over with you and the fire chief and making sure that in every fo, every adversity, you have a folder and you run it by the book. Everybody's got to do their certain part.
And those should be coming from the county too, those, that, those.
And, and we probably have been a little bit just making it publicly known, but we have been doing, we, every year we can give a Tony Goth drill with Pat and, and we've done, we've gone out to high school with all the EMS. We've gone, um, with Pat, law enforcement, uh, fire and rescue, uh, our Knox County Police and the school administrator and we've talked about school shootings. So, we've had some meetings and stuff and I don't think we, we educate the city on what kind of things that we do.
That's what we need to, we need to sit down and put something together so everybody in town knows that we're going to do a, a mock exercise and we're going to go through it for probably four hours. We're not going to just call in ten minutes, it's over. You know, we had inmates laying on the ground with ketchup all over and a medical squad had to come and evaluate them. We had to find out and we took a bus to Vermillion to, to evacuate the, the prison. So, we got to have same kind of scenarios like that, that if we had uptown sports bar or, or people store blows up, the whole town is infected right up there and we're going to have to contain it. Could have been a bomb, could have been a conspiracy, something. So, you know, that's where the city workers, that's where the, the council here's got to be involved, even the people that are on these committees that we just approved are going to have to be on this, on this, uh, page too. So, we're going to have to get to the next century of, of what we're seeing on TV, it could happen right here. We've seen how many burglars going on, taking vehicles in the middle of the daylight. There, it's a game for them.
They weren't propping night, so were they?
I mean, there's, there's, there's things that are happening in this town.
Yeah, they came through.
They came through, crossing, so.
Whether Pat Smith or who the hell ever did, they're not even control all this from the time it's happened, it happens fast, people.
Right.
And our county sheriff department better be ready to help us if we need it. They don't, if somebody better go and talk to people.
Right.
We're kind of on a bad spot because we're right next to Cedar County, on the head of Knox County, so, you know?
And I, hopefully we can work some of that out or try to fall asleep first, probably before we tried some of that a little bit. Any, but, um, but maybe, and, and I'm, I'm hoping that our new website helps with this education too. I mean, I really think that this is, I'm not very techy, but I think this is kind of a step towards more education out there.
And you can offer, um, and we can offer him too, but if he would like feminine E M T, we will pay for his, his schooling.
Cool, cool.
That's an option for him.
Okay, that sounds great. Any others?
Yeah, one more.
Oh, yep, so.
Yeah, what's the city have set up for storm spotters for this year?
Did you hear?
Storm spotters.
I don't know anything about that yet.
And a lot of towns, the firefighters are trained in doing it.
I think Dave last week said they don't do that, right?
They don't do that anymore. Dave Zabidel did do it and he had a few guys that would work with him helping out.
Is that something we want to do? Leave it up to the emergency management people and hope they pick it up or? You guys don't have tornadoes up here, you want to have tornadoes go right out on the street. We watched them every night come around. But yes, they are, we do need, we do need people out there. We'll, we'll leave that up to Larry and, and Jonathan. I asked, by the way, I asked the young man, so did you go by John or Jonathan, you know, there's that. And he said very calmly, Jonathan, that's who I am. And I liked it. Very plain spoken, yeah. Anyway, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, I believe, if we're done.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Okay, uh, let's see, let's do Larry.
Yep.
Arlene?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
And Doc?
Yes.
And the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.